All right, so I'll call to order. Calling to order, Chris.
I'm moving to adopt the agenda.
All right, we have a second? Sir, there's a second down there, okay? All in favor of adopting the agenda?
Aye.
And opposed to adopting the agenda?
The agenda is, the one on our screen-
Is it the one on the screen?
Is the same as the one in my packet?
Yes, there have been no changes to the committee of the whole.
A representation has been made that it's the same.
Well, then I'm okay with it.
All right, good. All right, so, and I guess we'll have to, since you're not in, you can't really vote, but those who are on will vote.
Are we gonna pull up the vote, or are we just gonna-
Only click on adoption of the agenda? All right, so, let's vote on the adoption of the agenda for those who can, but we'll go ahead around the room. Kevin, are you in favor?
I just changed.
Oh, is he on?
I just changed his direction. To change me.
All right, Kevin, are you in favor?
I can add that in later if you want to.
Okay, all right, because it's not popping up for me to vote. All right, so the next item is work session Clemson Inclusion and Equity Report.
Thank you. You have the report in front of you on the table. It will also be loaded into Board Docs and your Google Docs. Erica, we'll put it on the website as soon as the board has had a chance to look at it today. The important information is in, well, it's all important. The summary information is in the first 11 pages. So, what we thought we would do today, since Lee Gill could not be with us, the president of Clemson called a special meeting of his leadership team today, so Lee Gill isn't able to be here. Mr. Hollis had asked for the report to be brought to the board in Committee of the Whole, and what we had planned to do was to get it to you ahead of time, so it could be discussed today. But we are anxious to try to finish up today's meeting, because we have a lot to do, I know you do too. We are anticipating some word from the governor about possible lane reversals tomorrow. So, with your permission, we would like to give you the report today, give you time to look at it, and the scheduled time for Lee Gill to come over and have a work session with the board, either prior to the next board meeting, or during the next Committee of the Whole.
That makes sense to me. I believe that, Kevin, was it you that was asking questions about the group that was hired? Is that something?
Well, Chris.
Maybe we should kind of outline some things, like a direction we would like to see when we come back here for this follow-up meeting, right? I mean, is there something anyone in this room says, well, you know, try to tailor it a little bit for-
Is RIO's part of the Clemson Diversity Study conversation, or part of John Kennedy's conversation?
I don't know.
Because it was part of the, RIO's wasn't hired, for lack of a better word, or were sketched by Clemson Diversity-
No, it wasn't.
Right.
Not, not by them. If you look at recommendation number seven, on pages 10 and 11, recommendation number seven, which they gave to us several weeks ago, was to be ready to roll, so that the recommendations don't languish. So, we, with Dawn's leadership, reached out to RIO's, and if you look at the follow-through, evaluate and prioritize recommendations, create timelines and assign specific responsibilities, monitor the implementation, evaluate the success. So, they give the rationale, and then over on page 11, the concrete actions. Select and retain a group of independent outside consultants to assist the district in moving forward on recommendations in this project. The consultants must have proven experience and expertise in promoting diversity and inclusion in large systems, as well as the ability to facilitate dialogue in difficult or contentious relationships. The consultants should be independent of the district and free from obligations to local business or political leaders. A consultant should agree to an ambitious timeline to carry out their assigned tasks. And then, in consultation with community stakeholders, formulate additional recommendations, and implement the recommendations through a benchmark action plan. So, the recommendations from the RIO's group should be back to the board by January, but we don't have to wait for the RIO's report to begin taking some action. And that's the other thing we wanted to talk with the board about today, if you're willing to undertake a discussion about magnet and choice schools. That is a discussion we'd like to have with you right now, as a follow-up.
So, if I'm hearing you, you want to talk about magnet and choice schools right now during this portion?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I know there's an item I'd love to go through as well.
Yes, ma'am.
So, have certain items been identified in the initial report that we could take, if you want to call it immediate steps, forward where we don't necessarily have to, I don't want to use the term "wait on RIO's," but wait for them to come back to us, Cliff? Have those, have things been identified that we can move on now?
So, we have had a preliminary form of this report.
Okay.
We just received the final this morning.
Okay.
But we've had a preliminary form of it, and the cabinet members have been working through it, and so, yes, there are several actions that need to be started now, and in a good faith effort, we wanted to talk about magnet and choice today.
Okay.
And get the board's recommendations, to make sure that we are on the path that you would have chosen for us.
So, you are going to give us a report back from them to name the report correctly?
Right here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so now, the first step you want to do is you want to go through the first effort of talking about magnet schools, choices.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the reason, so on your handout, you will see, the first page looks like this. Does everybody have this handout?
Yes, ma'am.
Did it make it over to you?
Yes.
We're asking you, we've attached for you, we're gonna review them in just a minute, the next step actions that are related to the Clemson University Equity and Inclusion Report. But as soon as we go through this, we want feedback from every board member. If you have additional areas of inquiry or concern, if we, if you feel that what we have here misses the mark, or comes up short, we want to make sure that whatever work we're focusing on represents the wishes of the full board. So, we'll collect the individual recommendations. If there are differences of opinion among the board, we'll bring this back for the board to reach agreement on what it is you want us to be working on. So, that's that top page. The second page, we put in a copy of your Magnet Schools and Programs Policy, and we call your attention to the final paragraph on the first page. The superintendent may not use admission rules or procedures that have not been publicized at least one month prior to the application period, and may not apply any admissions procedure or criteria retroactively. The superintendent shall provide an admission preference for siblings of current students to promote family involvement in the school. So, this paragraph tells us we have to bring magnet choice to you today, if you want to make any choice, any changes for next school year, or else we cannot finish the process before the choice application process has to start. And also, we discovered, when a small group began research on this a few months ago, that regardless of board policy, some of the magnet schools have their own very stringent application processes and policies that were at some point, back in the 1990s, apparently approved by the board. So, they have separate documents that showed up as part of a board agenda action form, maybe in a committee of the whole, but didn't make it into formal board minutes. But they are still operating as if that is policy, but those of us who've come in here since then don't see that in policy.
Right.
So, one of the first things we have to do is to get clear about, here's an example. One of the schools runs its own auditions. We think those auditions should be conducted in a more transparent manner, with criteria that are known by everyone, and with staff that are not representative of the faculty at that school.
Yeah, I want to talk about that.
That is, that would be one of our recommendations. But we have to get that clear at the board level, because the school has documents showing that there's a particular way of doing that.
May I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
And there are others that, for example, we've had schools that have a separate policy that says why the child will be removed from a magnet school. And this policy states that doesn't happen.
Right.
So, do you need a board action that, a flat board action that says those are no longer board-approved documents? Do we have to, I mean, it's clear that we've got a document, but it's also clear that they have, they have documents that have been at some point approved by the board. We need to reverse that with a blanket vote that says-
I think so. I think we should. I think we need a uniform policy.
So, our hope would be to enact this working group very quickly, and have something back to you by the end of October, or early in November, which will take care of everything. And there might be a sentence in here that says this policy supersedes any previous agreements, documents, letters, notes, preferences, habits, practices.
And while I support that, and I think it's an excellent final, finally for us to do that in the form, I want to not forget that there are kids in magnet schools today, and if we're talking about this in October, I don't want them to be affected by something that's gonna get changed on November 1st, and happen to have the bad luck of getting affected by it on October 12th. So, I-
This will all be for next year.
So, that's what I'm concerned about. We have kids operating under those different things that we don't know about today, and I don't know about the rest of the board, but I feel a sense of urgency that that not continue.
Well, I think I would need it to be communicated to me what it is we're talking about before I say "not continue."
I agree.
I don't know what it is.
But I don't think we need to wait till the end of October.
I also think too, I think, you need to mention a good point, that there have been some particular practices that they've been, schools have been operating under. I think it would behoove us-
Chris, I agree, but I can't hear.
It would behoove us, for all of us, to have that information.
Yeah, we need to know what it is they're doing.
Right, to know what processes have they been working under. So, if we write or craft a new policy-
Right.
We can identify, like you read it says, I mean, it could be as general as anything that was done in the past, that may not have been policy, can no longer take place, or the policy could really identify, because I can see the naysayers would say, "Well, you didn't identify this particular item in the new policy, so I'm just gonna assume we can still work," you see what I'm saying?
So, we're talking procedure, I'm talking process. Get those changes implemented as the process. Getting the information, or how you word the board motion that does it, is definitely procedural, but I'm asking the board, do you feel a sense of urgency to get this done sooner, because we've got kids in magnet schools today? And until we do that, are operating under whatever we don't know they're operating under.
All this is doing is talking about admissions for next year. It's not affecting- You're probably kicking the kids out.
We have, no, we have faced that. We faced that last year. That is an operating practice in magnet schools.
And we use this policy to say no.
Right, but I don't think-
You're just talking about that one nuanced part, about whether a kid gets in trouble at school, gets sent back to their home school.
No, I'm also talking about grades. I'm talking about, that only came to us because of its appeal.
Yeah.
Not because the student didn't-
But Cindy, too, your argument, not, your position on this, is I think possibly one of the reasons why there hasn't been any change in the school choice policy, because to change it from what is before would impact those moving forward. Well, that's the intent, right? I mean, the intent from Clemson's recommendation is that we needed to really take a comprehensive look at our school choice and our magnet school application and process and policy.
I agree with you.
To not do that, and say, "Well, let's not do it this time, let's wait a little longer, so it didn't impact," we still, I think it was Kevin that says we're kicking the can. We were yet to continue to kick the can, when let's pick up and the trash can and start over.
I support what you're saying.
Kevin's gonna have a chance to speak. Is yours involved in what, this little thing, they're going back and forth on?
And I support that we, I mean, I've had proposed changes to magnet schools out of committee for two and a half years, the board's not chosen to take up. And that's two and a half years that the kids have still operated under some of this fragmented stuff. So, I support what we're doing. My question to the board is, do you want it to affect the 1819 school year, or do you want the changes that we're going to do to only affect the 1920 school year?
1920.
Todd said 1920, and then moving forward.
Yeah, we're not going back. Kevin, it's like Kevin's-
1920.
You know, the kids are already answered. Kevin?
I'm talking about the both of those. As with the diversity study outlines, and what your proposal with the magnet school changes, are you proposing that we start with this one particular school, and work our way through, and make those changes to kind of balance it, or what do you recommend?
I recommend that the next thing we do is to turn to the next page, and look at all seven of the Clemson recommendations about this, show you what we are proposing to do, and then let you tell us whether there are additional steps you want us to take. Not because this is the most important recommendation in the Clemson report, but because, under board policy, we are time constrained, and we've got to get this one started.
We need this today?
I just need to talk with you about this today, and you can have till the end of the week, depending on whether or not you have to evacuate, thinking your suggestions back, because you may want to talk to some people.
I'm with you now.
You may want to talk to others who have had experiences, and-
Thank you.
We want to make sure that whatever we do is transparent-
Yes, ma'am.
And it's ethical, and it's true to the recommendations, and that we're not, there's no pretense.
Did you want to go through these, or-
I just, I want to point out just a couple of them.
Okay.
Yes, so Clemson's recommendation number three says, it's not just related to choice in magnet schools, it says we form the system to ensure access to quality schools. So, the first recommendation is ensure that every school offers the classes and courses required for admission and success in magnet schools. Whether or not a kid wants, a child wants to go to a magnet school, they should have the opportunity to have had the preparation.
Right.
So, the first, there are a couple of different actions. On the right-hand side, this is our proposed action within the next 90 days. Review the criteria required by any magnet school. Make sure that we have at every elementary and middle and high school feeder pattern, the opportunity to access. That does not mean that we can provide every course at every school, but we have to have a viable way for children to access courses. And if it is a virtual course, it's got to be an effective virtual course, not something that's just that we say we provided it, but not every child could learn that way.
Yes, ma'am.
It's got to be honest. Then the second step, the second action item listed is to ensure that all middle schools offer Algebra I, which we still haven't done. We may have opportunities for every child in a school to take Algebra I, but we're not offering it in every school. There's a difference.
Yes.
Can I ask what you need from us to do that? Because I thought we were trying to do that.
We don't need anything. We're just telling you that this is where we're starting.
Okay.
Then the second one is about magnet schools, the residency rules and other preferences.
Is this looking to you? Is that a handout on this?
The handout, I'm just, what one of our staff members did was to take the Clemson report and break it down. There are these seven things under their recommendation number three. The second is to review the magnet schools residency rules, and their other preferences, including siblings, and the testing barriers that might hinder the application enrollment, and then make changes. So, on the right-hand side, we explain what it is that we would do, and in this one, we're talking about convening a working group that would include school and parental stakeholders, not just magnet schools, but all school stakeholders, parent educators, parents and educators. The third is to develop and implement a transportation solution. So, on the right-hand side, we tell you what we're thinking about in terms of transportation. The fourth, the user-friendly application process. That was mentioned when Clemson was here to give their report. On the right-hand side, it tells you how we're thinking about at least approaching solving that. On the next page-
Is that a question?
Yes, sir.
In that transportation, will you be able to outline how that would impact our overall budget?
Yeah, there'll be a budget component to that one.
Yeah.
All right. On the next page, hold magnet and charter schools accountable for achievement and progress in the same manner. So, we would want to look at subgroups, subgroup performance in those schools. No one wants to be called a subgroup, but that's the way to-
Yes, what is that? I'm trying to figure out what that means. I figure with our magnet schools, we do.
Nice to say.
So, we're not sure what this means, but one of the things we think it might mean is, if you have fewer than 30, 20 students in a particular group in a school, then those students' achievement is not reported, so you can't see it. It's very difficult to compare the achievement of English-speaking students at academic magnet schools.
Is this one, we tried to report it, but they just didn't accept it at the state level, is why we didn't get a U.S. News and World Report?
No, this is different from that. This is just saying that we need to hand calculate and compare across all of our schools the progress of every, of all Hispanic-speaking students, or all English-language learners, all African-Americans. If it's a predominantly African-American school, then all white children, if there are fewer than 20.
Didn't realize we weren't doing that, okay.
Number six, acknowledge the inequity of a system of charter and magnet schools that disproportionately serve the wealthy white population, and currently are largely inaccessible to minority and poor students. So, what we're proposing, that's a Clemson statement. What we're proposing to do is develop a demographic profile for each magnet and charter school to determine the extent to which the schools compare to the district's student population. So, when, last week, we had some staff members lay out the achievement in bar graphs of the predominant population in a school versus others, and when you did that, we have several schools that have fewer than 20 students in a particular subgroup, in a particular grade. So, we have some schools that are predominantly white, and schools that are predominantly African-American. So, it isn't just charter schools that are creating this impact. So, that's what our response to this statement says, we need to look at all of them-
Kevin?
And decide what is acceptable to do.
Do you have a question about this one?
Well, two things. One, are some schools are predominantly African-American, are based on their geographical neighborhood and the income base, and what they can afford to live at, which allows that to impact that area the way that it does. You, you're talking about creating a demographics or in a process where kids can be going to that magnet school program, that pulls away the top-tier kids from those schools, that kind of help the other kids kind of learn, you know, in a team teaching approach. So, my question is to you, how do we, well, I understand what you're doing. How do we shore those schools up, so kind of they come up to standards too? If that makes sense?
It's a great question. I think it is one of the questions, and I'm not recommending that, I'm just telling you that's what you have. And it's a thorny issue with which this board is going to have to deal. What is your value around that? What is your value around that? Do you think that a school that has a mixture of socioeconomic groups, because that's, as you mentioned, that's what it often boils down to? Do you think that a school with a mixture of socioeconomic groups is desirable, and if so, what are you willing to do to obtain that result?
Well, you know, somebody had an article the other day, I wasn't looking for it, but they were saying integrating schools will actually do African-Americans a great just, but that's not necessarily a true statement. What you provide into that school, and the support you give that school helps make it a great school. There are African-American institutions that thrive and produce great success to society. Integration comes into effect when we learn how to interact with each other, which is great. But sometimes, children, especially in a society that we're, you know, with today, needs mentoring from its own kind at times. Who's that? Transformer?
Hurricanes here.
Anyway, they need nurturing from its own kind sometime to kind of be successful. Now, I can tell you the works two different ways, don't get me wrong. I think you heard my story, when I first got integrated into a school when I was young, and how my first year was not a great thing for me, it was actually based upon race. But also, there were individuals that weren't African-American, that were white, that nurtured me and helped me along the way. It works both ways. Having the individual that actually care about what they're doing means more than filling a void with just an individual.
I don't disagree with anything you're saying. I think the challenge for administration is to implement the value that this board and community have expressed. And it, the schools exist the way they are, because in the past, people made decisions that they felt were the best decisions, whoever "they" is, whatever "felt" means, and that's why we have what we have. The question and opportunity before us is to ask ourselves if that's the best we can do for our children.
I get you.
That's all. And whatever the majority of the elected officials decide is best, is what this administration will try to do. But that's the invitation that Clemson, that Clemson study, which was authorized by this board, puts before the public. And it can-
Dr. Postaway?
Yes.
Priscilla's got a question, or she's got some, director on this? Okay, was your question about this one thing, because Priscilla was waiting?
Well, my question was, or my statement is, that I agree, I understand what Kevin is saying about mentoring, but I wholeheartedly agree with the Clemson recommendation that we need to integrate our schools, all of our schools. And we need to have teachers and leaders that certainly represent all of the kids in the school, but our goal should be integrating, and that's better for all of the kids. So, that's just a comment.
Priscilla?
Kevin, I completely agree with you, and having taught in an integrated public high school, there's, you need constant vigilance, so what you're worried about doesn't happen, because you can end up, which I've seen happen with two unequal schools within the school building, and so it takes constant vigilance of all of us to make sure that those, it doesn't matter who they are, whose needs aren't being addressed, to be addressed. But once you figure that out, and I have seen it work, not all the time, and yes, those kids always need advocates within the buildings and within the community. It's good for all of the kids, because they start learning about each other, and the nonsense that we see going on in this country right now is because oftentimes, we have not sat in classrooms together and learned about each other. That's just my experience.
Cindy?
So, specifically to number six, you said that CCSD staff will develop a demographic profile for each magnet and charter school to determine the extent to which the schools and it continues. Could we expand that two ways, and have it be that we look at the demographic profile of all of our schools? Just, it would be good to know. And second, I'd like it to go back a couple of years.
We absolutely can, and that's what we asked you to put on this sheet. So that we understand exactly the top two here, so we understand precisely how you want us to expand what we've proposed. That's why this was so important to discuss today, because this particular item gets at the heart of nearly everything else. It strikes at the heart of what is it that we value? What's our theory of change? How do we think society really changes, and creates a community that values all of its, all human beings and all children? And whatever we think that is, we somehow have to come to majority agreement about it. This is, this is at the heart of a lot of the conflict in our society today, period. And today, we are simply signaling, there's a lot of nonsense that goes on atmospherically today. And all of the people here, and the board, have got to pledge ourselves to tune out all that nonsense, get off Facebook, and let's get in here and work, and see if we can courageously confront some of these thorny issues that have heretofore been intractable in our society. We have an opportunity to make a difference. There are many who came before us who also wanted to make a difference, but here we are. So, what is it that we might be willing to do differently, that would create a different result 10 years from now?
I also think too, Doc, to that point, rolling back a bit, to as much as we can, and I don't even know if the board would find this even, find this helpful, but to think about something, something that number five talks about, when it talks about the accountability of achievement and progress in schools, looking back to see whether or not, if these things, the choice school, the charter school movements, have really benefited all of our children? And if not, and if they haven't- And if not, and if they haven't, the data would show whether or not they have or they have not. And we're looking at when Dr. Postway talks about subgroups, I think we can identify the subgroups in that manner. And if they have not, I think that gives us a better foundation to move forward. Because I think some folks will push back against anything that the Clemson recommendation has as it pertains to altering or changing magnet programs and the process in the choice applications. But if the foundation of our work moving forward is predicated on the accountability of achievement. Then we can argue and say, well, these schools have this, but from an academic standpoint, they have not been better serving our children. This is our attempt to do that. Now, if you don't like that, well then you gotta take issue with the fact that schools haven't been accountable and haven't been serving all children. Maybe some of the children, but not all. And I think hopefully that would delete some of the pushback that will be.
Return to their home schools for academic reasons. I think it would shock the public.
What's that Kevin?
Going back to the magnet schools and just, I'm just using one. The magnet school in North Charleston, the academic magnet, that's been existed now how long, Chris?
Did that twenty years?
About twenty years.
Eighty-nine, ninety?
Erica went there. What year did you graduate?
Yeah, I did one time, there was a policy and one time it was integrated pretty good and somehow I got away from that. But it is, it's, the way it is today, I can't say it's by design or maybe just a lack of being persistent and pushing to integrate. But then you, you talked about integrating now and integration is not, is not an easy topic. It's not just something we can just sit in here and say, we're just gonna, you know, there are emotional and psychological barriers. When you put a child in the environment that they're not accustomed to, sometimes as children or adults, I think adults are the worst of the bunch. That, that makes it difficult for a child to make that transition. So if, when we're looking at this, I'm saying to you is, we gotta look at it from all angles. We always like to talk about the data, but then we want the child to be successful. You know, we gotta make sure that child, when he gets into that environment, that we put all resources to make that child very successful.
I'm sure.
And building on that again, is some of the students that I had came from basically all black schools and some came from basically all white schools. So we, and that, again, what I'm saying is we have to have things in place when the kids are, come together to support all of that. But more critically than that, you can't just say, we're gonna have this number of these kids and this number of these kids and throw them in a curriculum building. And so I have serious problems with curriculum issues. If you're gonna have a mixed school, an integrated school, and you teach a, I was an art teacher. And the art programs that are often introduced are Western European art programs. Well, you, I created a multicultural art curriculum because those were the kids who were sitting in my classroom. And you gotta do it across the board in two or three years. Before I got on the board, the state of South Carolina had the books that we're all supposed to be using here on display in the library. Every face, I looked at forty or fifty books, every face in every single one of those textbooks as well. Every face. I looked through, Munheen was reading, we looked through all those books. So if you're gonna, we have to be inclusive all the way down to what the kids are, are seeing in their books, hearing in their classroom, and it has to be inclusive. And again, it helps all of the kids because then they start learning about each other's cultures.
And I'll go a step further, even our policy, and what Chris Collins was mentioning before, that principals have the ability to hire who they, who they choose to hire that doesn't come through the district. And so we have schools that have predominantly all white staff and, and almost predominantly all African American student population. So this is not just, in my opinion, just a diversity issue when it comes to integrated students. Not, not just a diversity issue when we're talking about curriculum and what's being taught and how it's being taught, but also those who are in the building. And do and will we as a board take any action on whether or not the staff, the certified staff in the building is representative of the district as a whole also? Considering there is obviously seemingly not a, a lot of teachers of diverse backgrounds in the profession as it is. So I think there's a lot of different moving parts with this that we're going to probably have to come at it from a lot of different ways and different angles.
I got a question, and I might need some guidance from legal on, but what control do we have over the charter schools? They're mentioned in here too. Are we gonna direct the charter schools that they have to take different?
State law mandates the charter schools diversity, not without the districts. It's actually in the state statute, so we simply follow that.
We follow that.
We could enforce that, right, but-
But East Cooper Montessori and CDA are both well outside of-
Right.
And Prestige for that matter, would the twenty percent boundary of our policy?
Oh, the state policy.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's a state, there's a state statute for that, not a CCSD statute.
So an example of action you can take is the same sort of action that you took this past spring. When you alerted one of the charter schools to your expectations and gave them a certain length of time in which to meet those expectations.
Chris, I can't hear at all now.
I'm putting you, you're within one foot.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I, I will speak up. I, I just have one of the options. Did you hear Mr. Staub's question about what, what, what are our alternatives?
What control at all do we have over charter schools, some of which are Charleston County, some are state?
For those, for those that are under Charleston County School District jurisdiction, we can hold, we can notify them that they have a certain length of time to get within certain parameters. And if they don't, the board will tell them to withdraw the charter. That's one choice. I'd just like to pick up on something that Mr. Miller said a little bit ago. He was talking about one of these actions and looking at achievement and the board's expectations. And I think in your comments, it, it could have been construed that you were talking about magnets, choice schools and charters. But I think that comment applies to all schools.
Yes.
If within three years, you're not showing some signs of dramatically increasing student achievement, this board is going to take these actions. And I think those actions should apply whether a school is one of the district's traditional schools or a charter school.
Oh, definitely.
So I just wanna clarify, I think student well-being, a student well-being, and a lot to apply to every single facility.
And I'll add one more comment, cause I heard something when we first started on this discussion about the district, I guess, taking away whatever autonomy a magnet school may have to do its own auditions. Which I guess you're probably talking about one of the art schools for that. The only concern I have on that is, I don't think it makes, I, I don't know anything about art and I wouldn't want, I, I don't, I don't think just bringing down here and getting a couple of people at Seventy-Five Calhoun Street to judge whether someone is a dancer, played the piano, or whatever it may be. I don't think you can cut them out completely. I think one of the reasons why there was concern about bringing everything to Seventy-Five Calhoun Street was because there was a public trust issue there. There was a concern that decisions would be made in a non-fair way. And I, I just point that out and-
Can you just keep that for us, I'm sorry.
Okay, alright, so there, there have been discussions over the years about not allowing certain magnet schools to do their own auditions. And one of the concerns, at least that I've heard from the public, was if you brought it all to Seventy-Five Calhoun Street and didn't allow it to be done by the people on the, on the grounds themselves that know what they're doing. Then there could be some, you might not have fairness. You might have, I guess, thirty thousand foot decision making that might not have anything to do with whether the kid was the, you know, the most talented or the, or that scored the highest scores. And I, I even remember a couple of years ago, there was a question by a business group that wanted, and that was before you were here, wanted permission to just be able to ask the superintendent. If we put this in a package to bring a new business to town, we want, we want you to be able to give us a, a couple of seats so we can offer those to the highly compensated people at large industry. And that, that just doesn't seem fair in our equitable situation. I, I, I think there needs to be a feeling amongst the community that the kids are treated and evaluated fairly. Now, I do agree with the comment that all evaluation procedures should be publicized beforehand. This, this idea that parents can't find out what the criteria, that's just ridiculous in my mind. I think you should be able to go online or wherever it is and find out, if I want to be a ballerina, here's how I'm gonna be graded. If I wanna go to the academic magnet, here's how, here's the process. There shouldn't be any hiding of that.
Thanks for the opportunity to clarify. I didn't mean at Seventy-Five Calhoun.
Okay, alright.
I meant independently.
Okay, alright, alright, alright.
I think everybody in the audience would say, we, we want no part of-
Alright, okay. I was picturing a bunch of folks around here watching.
Or academic adjudication.
Jeff Faroey picking out who's the, the best dancer.
But Chris, I also think the pushback, the reverse side of that is what I, is what I've always heard, which was allowing, allowing the folks from the school to determine who gets in. Creates an unfair advantage for those who are already on the inside. They get their hand picked, who they picked versus, you know, who they've been training. And so people on the outside who may audition but don't get, in their, in their mind, a fair audition. Because remember, initially the auditions were open and then there was some, some pushback about that and so then they were closed and the names were redacted. So there've been some issues that even at the school-based level, that hasn't presented a very fair and balanced representation of equality of getting in a program.
Yeah, everyone I think would agree to transparency, yeah.
Well, and going with you-
Thank you, Chris.
Kevin's talking.
Go ahead, Kate, now.
Okay, go ahead Kate.
So the one comment, this might not be the right time, but I think in, in this whole context, we really need to take a look at the partial magnet. Because in my humble opinion, only a few of them are really doing what they are intended to do. And some of them are just getting an extra teacher point and, and, and there's a few where it's really, I feel like we're just segregating kids. And I think that we need to take a real hard look and decide whether we even really need partial magnets. We should be offering the highest level of academics and arts, a kind of option to all of our schools. So that, that, I'd like to take a really hard look at that.
Okay, and there is a, the form that was handed out, which I imagine will be emailed to you maybe. It has a place where you can list your areas of inquiry and concern for consideration.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Yes.
Going back to what you were saying about the school yards, I, I heard from a couple of people over the weekend, last week. And also I had a parent, a couple of parents a few months ago, when they tried to apply there, how they thought it was unfair. But I really couldn't wrap my hands around that at the time. And I heard from some people that actually were in the district at one time. And one person gave me a good analogy, I think this is where Dr. Postway was going. But they were telling me about a young lady one time that applied to go there from a different economical background. And you have families there that actually put a lot of resources into their children to, to win a, the place in there. This young lady did not come from that environment, went to try out and was treated, kids treated her not in a fair way. Child walked off and did not want an audition. So, so what I'm getting at here is, you know, and, and going back to what Chris Collins was saying a while back. We have to make this process, for example, we have people that we need to put in that system, just give you an example. Like a Michelle Poe or Art Gil Yard, are people that we know within the community that can help make that a fair process. Because, because that child does not have the same resources. That child may have the ability to be great, but if we don't get that child a fair playing field to advance in that, in that, in that, in that environment, you know, then we're doing a dissatisfaction. So, you know, when we're talking about that, you know, some people are not comfortable with change. And we have to make sure that change is fair and we gotta make sure that change, that change benefits everyone.
Reverend Collins?
Thank you. It has been my, it has been my tendency over the past couple of years, that we have to do more to allow kids to attend these magnet schools. Such as SOA and an academic magnet and, and what we're doing at DSU. But, but I think we, I think we missed the boat when we, we put artistic performance above academic performance. As, as the underlying and deciding factor determining who gets into a school. Cause then we meet, then we begin to fall into the lines of dividing children based on whether, whether the family was able to get them in the lessons early, whether they could afford private lessons, private instructors. A prime example is that when we have the, the kids that apply to the academic magnet, each year about twenty-five percent, a third of those kids come from private schools that get in. And that's a lot of seats being taken out of, you figure, you figure a hundred and some seats, that's a lot of seats. That's going outside the district, the kids that never attended our school. And so why, why should that be? Because that's, that's someone who has a better background, a private teacher and private tutoring. I don't wanna say a better school.
I wouldn't say a better school.
Yeah, not a better school, but one-on-one, whereas the other children sat in the classroom with twenty-five other kids and one teacher. And so they, so they learn, they learn fast during class better and may have, may have a parent on whom they can help them assist them. So we make decisions based on, on the outcome we see, but it shouldn't be just on one factor alone. Especially not whether, whether a child has an art, an art ability, to sing a song or play an instrument or can dance better than other children. We in the business of educating kids. It can't be that your performance gets you in anything. It should be your overall record to some degree. And then if, and even with that, this equitable distribution to make, make sure the school, all schools represent all children. And so far, we're not representing all children in all schools. It's going kind of one way.
Priscilla?
Chris?
No.
Were you before me? Go ahead. And I think I'm just gonna reiterate what, what Kate just said, is have one school be an art academic magnet. Like we should have strong arts in all of our schools, strong math in all of our schools. I mean, this whole magnet system, we maybe need to step back and look at it. Like why does everybody wanna get in this one school? Why aren't we providing those things different places? That's my bigger question around this whole magnet school issue. Because then we're creating a monster really, like we have so many kids and these schools can only take so many kids.
I think that with any good idea, there's a tipping point when it quits being a good idea regarding magnets, partial magnets, teacher points and everything else regarding around magnets. We have long passed that tipping point. It's, it's unwieldy and, and now unfair. And I understand where this conversation is, and this is about fair and equitable admissions. This is about making sure everyone has an opportunity and has the capacity to effectively compete for the opportunity, absolutely. Not taking away from that, I have serious concerns that, that a lot of our public believes that once a child is admitted into a magnet school, they're there. And the reality is our magnet schools have some pretty interesting rules that tend to put children back in their home schools that neighborhood schools don't get. And I think while this is admissions, and I agree it's nineteen-twenty on the admissions, I would be concerned to see any kids that are being removed. And I think from the board's lack of, of, of understanding of that.
I'm looking around the room and seeing some of our fellow board members showing an indication they don't know what the heck you're talking about.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
There are kids that are, there are certain, there are magnet schools that say if you're, if you, if you are a discipline issue. You will be returned to your home school. Not if you are a discipline issue, we will work through those issues at this school. There are schools, and last year, Chris, was not an outlier, that regularly have said, if you cannot keep up with the academic rigor. And we're not talking about tested in magnet schools, you will be sent back to your home school. I would like to make sure those things are-
That's a private school.
Where, where, where does that happen?
Those rules are private schools.
But that's again, our policy for this to be due to-
May I please finish?
Please.
So what I'm saying is, if y'all are not aware of this happening, then I would like to see the board, the, get a report. Michael and I are both aware of what we're talking about.
Just say it.
Say it, cause we don't know, I don't wanna go read something later.
The kids who are discipline problems are sent back to their regular school instead of being concluded in the issues of that magnet.
Is this across the board or at one?
For rediscipline across the board, for academics tied to your big ones in West Ashley and downtown. And I think that we need to make sure that in eighteen, nineteen, that stops, not another year before that stops. And if we don't think this is a problem, maybe the districts can put together the number of students who were removed from magnet schools after they were admitted. Not because they voluntarily wanted to go back, they were removed for the last three years. removed for the last three years. If it's not a problem, then I'll be glad to say, okay. But I have a strong fear that I know all the way from North Charleston, all the way to views, children are being put back in their home schools, not voluntarily, based on rules that don't exist in our neighborhood schools.
I, I, I mean, I think we'd all like to see that reported somewhere.
And that's why I was so adamant, that I would love to see us start taking some of that action in 1819, because this isn't just an admissions process, this is a continue to work with and educate process.
Well, that's a culture, that's a culture thing, where discipline comes into play, and they're being treated differently because, because the environment they come from, they act one particular way in generic to this environment.
I mean, anyway, they're being sent out. And that's entirely not fair.
Well, that's why I said, again, integration comes in a different avenue. You, we're going to have to facilitate, said earlier, we're going to have to be able to make sure that support is there for that, for that environment to understand what do they have. That's, you know, it's, it's, it's a.
It's a, you, you take them, you keep them.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's really interesting that we just had this discussion, I think the other day, with some educators, again, you know, in an HBCU, I had this with somebody Friday having lunch. In an HBCU, it really takes its pride in taking that piece of coal and turn it into a diamond. If the regular public school takes that interest in that same philosophy, we won't have this problem, even in the magnet school. Kids are different. They come from different backgrounds, different walks of life, whole nayyars. So we have to find those teachers, that, that team, that staff, that understands what they're dealing with in, in, in magnet schools, charter schools, whatever it may be, and understand what they're dealing with, and shape those individuals. Everybody's not the same. You know, and I'm pretty sure Wondell, Wondell has kids of different backgrounds and so forth, that they have a lot of, you know, a lot of ways that they're dealing with over there. And I'm pretty sure they adapt or try to adapt to get those kids to be successful. So we've got to understand, just in different cultures, if, if, I understand where Cindy's coming from. I see what she's saying.
I don't think the commandant of military magnets can put up with much.
No, no.
Act it up, saying my.
But I understand.
Does not putting up with much nonsense mean following the disciplinary action plan approved by the board, or does it mean telling them they've got to go back to another school and have the other principals?
Right. Well, we've got a policy for that.
My point being is that that's what I think we're not aware of.
So maybe in a future Friday update, we can get a report on, not names.
How many kids have been removed from magnet schools after acceptance for disciplinary or academic based reasons?
Right. Don't think anybody would have objection to that.
We, we do have a policy that says they can't do that. So I think even while we're waiting on the report, staff needs to reiterate to those principals that they need to be following that policy.
Amen to you.
So, and do you need an action from us saying that we are approving these proposed actions?
No, it's all right now.
Okay.
Thank you. I, we are ready to conclude this part of the discussion. We wanted, the, the purposes of this discussion, of this hour were.
I'm sorry, Jerry.
It's okay. I'm a teacher.
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'll finish it up with Cindy later.
The purpose of, thank you. The purposes of this discussion were to make sure you have the Clemson report, two, that you know that a work session will be scheduled, hopefully on a day when you already have a meeting scheduled, and three, that we are moving forward with this particular set of recommendations, and that we need to hear from you. This says by Wednesday, but given the weather, that we could hear from you by Friday, on anything additionally you want us to do. So, then we'll compile all that and bring it back. This is serious stuff.
It is.
And this is what we need to be spending our time on, not coming in here arguing over really just silly stuff. So, thank you. And I would entertain, with your permission, I would request that we adjourn to executive session.
All right. So let's get a motion to go into executive session, somebody, please. All right. Chris Collins, I need you to give me a second.
All right.
So give me the motion.
Give me a motion.
You don't ever make a motion, make a motion. Make a motion that we go into executive session.
I moved to go into executive session.
All right.
I do make a motion once a year.
Do you really? Okay.
You know, Halloween.
All favor?
I think so.
All right. Any opposed? To go into executive session.
I'll see for one second. I'll see for one second.
All right. So we have one, two, three, four.
I'm hoping to come back into.
We don't have a corner.
I'm hoping to come back into.
Yeah, yeah.
So you have a meeting, you have to come back.
Miller, adjourn, call the meeting to order, adopt the agenda amended to only vote on one item, vote on one item.
Vote on two items.
What's the one item? Three B and three G.
Three B and three G.
Three.
Mr. Miller, did you just make a motion to come back into open session?
Would you like to?
I'll make it, but we don't, okay, now.
You can have Kate.
I have it.
Oh, you got Kate.
Yeah, we got Kate.
I'm here, I'm here.
All right. So I believe Mr. Miller is making a motion to bring us back into.
Make a motion, come back into open.
Open session.
Open session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.
Second.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chair, I would like to call to order the board meeting earlier than the suggested time on our agendas, based on the impending plans the district has to make.
Great. All right. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
I move to approve a two-year extension on three B.
Okay. We've got a second, got a, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody here opposed?
Aye.
Okay, Michael Miller opposes, so please make a note of that. All right. And then, trying to get my computer up, and do we have anything else that we had on this?
Yes.
Okay, go to that pass.
Three G.
That passed. It had one opposed.
One opposed.
No, Kate, Kate voted yes. Michael voted no.
Julie, are we going too fast, or did you capture the votes?
That was, that was what I was talking about, right?
That was the two, the two years.
You got it, okay.
All right. Special comments. Okay, you had a second matter?
Yes, and I do not have my agenda in front of me. Can I just call it three G? For, yes, regarding a legal matter, I move to authorize general counsel to move forward with an appeal as discussed in the executive session, if necessary.
Second.
If necessary.
Or someone else, I don't know if I'm supposed to second or not.
Second.
Okay, second. All in favor of approving the appeal?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Oh, the what?
I'd like to.
Yes, all in favor, yes. Reverend Collins, did you have a comment, public comment?
I guess I do have a comment. I do, I spoke with general counsel already about what we vote on something of this, this nature, that they have some type of, some type of general, some type of general identity on the topic. At least have a topic of what we're kind of dealing with. Not, not the detail necessarily, but at least kind of have a topic to kind of freshen what we're dealing, that the, the public is aware of what we're reporting. We're not necessarily all the details, the confidential matter, but that's my own, but I do, I do vote yes, but I think we need to clear up the matter. Maybe it's general, to make a statement maybe, of what we're doing.
If she feels comfortable releasing a statement, I'm sure she will.
She's standing there.
And that's fine. I will make sure that the future agendas have a statement.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to adjourn in light of the score preparations the district needs to make.
All right. Second from Mr. Miller, all in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Any opposed to adjourn?
You vote, don't you?
I assume we carry over to the September 24th meeting, any items from the committee of the whole, or the special call meeting that did not get taken up today.
Yes, yes.
And is there anybody in the room who wanted to say something that's like, been sitting here all day, that like, just wanted to public?
They all look like staff.
I don't want to cut out anybody's opportunity.
I might as well be on.
By order.
It's a good, it's a good, it's a good.
All right, thank you.
But they're too good to talk.